I'd like to call the meeting to order. January 28, 2014, committee is a whole meeting. Number two, approval of agenda. Anybody, any additions? No, it's been moved.
Second.
Second, moved to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, carried. Conflict of interest declarations. Does anybody have a conflict of interests? Having heard none, we'll move on to number three, which is presentation. And it's the Tuscat River Environmental Protection Association, Mr. John Sallos. So John Sallos, you can take the floor.
Okay. Thanks for having me. Hopefully, I'll take less than ten minutes. I think a report probably already got circulated.
Yes.
And you probably have a chance to look at it. So I don't have to talk a whole lot. Now, let's see if I can figure out how to work this thing. And maybe even the presentation got circulated, too. Anyway, this is just in terms of some history. You've all heard about the problem up in Clare and down the Groull River with the green water and the blue-green algal blooms and all the rest of it. This attracted quite a bit of outcry, especially from people in the Carlton region. And from 2008 to 2011, the Department of the Environment commissioned a series of water quality studies, spearheaded by Mike Berlinski, who was able to sort of indicate that uncontrolled effluent from too much mink farming was a crucial factor behind the blue-green algal blooms. There's other nutrients coming in there, too, but without the mink farms, it probably wouldn't happen. The fur industry regulations came in. They were declared just about a year ago. So now they're interested in following up to see if those are having any effects. So that's one sort of studies that was being done. Second set of studies, Mersey Tobey attic Research Institute, based up in Kemp, up in Queen's County. Back in 2010, they started looking at eight different lakes in the Tuscat catchment. Their main interest was the Atlantic coastal plains flora. This is a whole series of plants. This area is, got a lot of them. A lot of them are species at risk. A lot of them like environments that are sort of low nutrients, where there's not much competition. So they were checking water quality as part of this. We got involved as volunteers initially, but from 2012 and 2013, we got involved with working with MTRI, added to the lakes, basically trying to see if there were any problems in the Tuscat catchment, in addition to the Carlton River problem, where problems were likely to happen. And last year, Environment Nova Scotia got ahold of us to coordinate the studies in the Carlton, to the extent of our abilities. So that's what we've been up to. And what I wanted to do tonight was, if this thing works, share a few results. Now, before I show you these things, you've seen those highly colored graphs. Presenting this stuff is an awful challenge, because there's so much data. How do you do it? So we'll start with the, this is the one that summarizes everything. First of all, chlorophyll A, that's a measure of these little algal plankton that are floating around in the water. If you've got a lot of chlorophyll A, you've got more of it, and more chances for pollution, not necessarily all the time, but sometimes. The way we've arranged it, we've gone from upstream to downstream, mainly following the main Tuscat. And there were a lot of lakes along the Carlton, which are purple. And so, again, upstream to downstream. We did four a year, May, July, August, and October. So for most lakes, for most parameters, May till October, four parameters. What you're going to notice with regard to chlorophyll A is a peak in the middle two months, July and August. Why? Because it's summer. Longer days, higher temperatures, so they grow faster. These little green bugs, they need light, more of that in the summer. The other thing they need is nutrients. And the most common nutrient that's limiting is phosphate. So what you notice here, in the Carlton, the levels of chlorophyll A tend to be higher on the surface. Big one in Redditch. Along the main Tuscat, not too bad. So we don't have the problems there. There were a couple of peaks. There was a little peak in Cagushook in August, a little peak in Gilfillin in July. That was about three days or four days after that really heavy rain. But in general, that's the way she works. Now, light and nutrients, those are the two things they need. So let's look at the main limited nutrient. Look at the Carlton. Lot more phosphorus in the Carlton than in the Tuscat. No surprise. It's interesting, we got Gilfillin here and Wilson's here. In July and in the later months, it was a bit higher, so maybe there's a little bit coming in from Quinton. It's not a huge problem. Things tended to be higher in Cagushook in October. And I don't know if that's the start of a trend or not. We need to look further to see about that. So phosphorus looks like that. So more nutrients in the Carlton, more of that chlorophyll A in the Carlton. Now, another thing, it might not be quite so clear, but in general, the Carlton River Lakes, transparency. This seki depth, you take a white disc over the side of a boat, and you see how deep it goes before it disappears. So it's an indication of how clear the water is. Look at Sloans. Wow. Real clear. Fortunately, not many nutrients in it, so it's not green. Thank God for small blessings. But in general, the Carlton River Lakes, especially downstream, where there was more chlorophyll A, are clearer than the Tuscat River Lakes. Notice Cagushook is clearer than Gilfillin, clearer than Pearl, clearer than downstream Tuscat River Lakes. So Cagushook is clear. Doesn't have much nutrients yet. This is just another measurement. We don't have as many measurements here in color. It's another measurement of transparency. High color upstream in the Carlton, lower color downstream. The lower the color, the clearer the water. Cagushook is nice and clear. Clear than Gilfillin, clearer than Pearl. And this is kind of funny, too. We don't know why, neither does Mike Berlinski, but pH, the Tuscat has got a really low pH. These orangey-brownish spots, okay? I don't know if that helps protect it or not. Cagushook doesn't. It's about one point higher, which means one-tenth the acidity. Ditto for the Carlton River Lakes. So my suspicion is, Cagushook is clear water, clearer water than the main Tuscat, but Cagushook has higher pH than the main Tuscat. It doesn't have the nutrients yet. There's no green stuff in that lake yet, but it might be vulnerable. So just a couple of thoughts here, in terms of conclusions. Water quality monitoring, it's sort of a good early warning management tool to sort of control and manage pollution, so that if problems start to happen, maybe a stop can be put. And the other thing is, Cagushook and maybe further upstream in other lakes along the cold stream, there's no problem yet, but it's a concern. There's a lot of cottages around Cagushook, a lot more being built. The cottages themselves are not a problem. If they build them right, then don't build too close to the lake, and we don't have septic tanks going in. So in terms of recommendations, okay, now, I'm not talking about this year, anything immediate, but I'd just like you to consider supporting and managing a water quality management program jointly with other municipalities. I'm going to be talking to other municipalities, too. You're the first one. How about that? Yarmouth municipality knows about it a little bit, because they were approached last year for funding to help support this stuff. They really liked the idea. They regretfully declined, and I fully understand why. Because you know all about the downloading that you guys are getting, and the lack of money you're getting. But there is hope if discussions can be held with the province. One word of warning, Environment Nova Scotia really likes this idea. Volunteer-driven, locally-led, water quality monitoring in the Tuscat River. It is a good idea. The logical leaders are the municipalities, but they're more interested in the Carlton because of the mink problem. But I do think Cagushook is a concern. And the Tuscat River is an important river. And the other thing that I will recommend more strongly is consider strengthening protection of riparian buffers in Argyle municipality. There's a good model in Yarmouth. I think my report I mentioned, Clare has a bylaw, and Yarmouth municipality has a bylaw. Yarmouth is, the zone in Yarmouth is narrower. I think it's 12 meters, and Clare's is 65 feet or something like that.
What's a riparian?
The borderline of lakes and rivers. So that, it just means, yeah, it's a, what's a jargon? But I mean, basically means the borderline to lakes and rivers. So if, because if you can protect that, minimize development along it, it will help absorb the stuff that runs into the water. So you don't get the mud, the turbidity, you're protecting your fish stocks and all the rest of it. I think I circulated a little publication for Mersey Tobey attic earlier in the year. I am, that's another project we have in TREEPA, and I am way behind on it, but I'm going to try to get a whole bunch of flyers printed and put them in mailboxes, so that we work a little harder on the public education thing, and also go to the schools and get some of that propaganda out, too, because public awareness is important. But I do think, in the long run, there's no problem here yet, but you don't want to have something like that either. And mink farms are not the only source of nutrients. So those are the two thoughts that I wanted to share in terms of recommendations. And that's it. What do I click to exit? And do you have any questions?
Yes, I think we do have questions. Counsel LeBlanc?
First off, very interesting presentation, actually. Just out of curiosity, if you were, you spoke briefly on the Tobey attic. If you were to compare lakes and rivers in the Tobey attic to some of the lakes you've looked into here in our area, is the difference readily apparent? Is the problem almost nonexistent due to the fact that the Tobey attic is less frequented by, you know, human activities?
No, I haven't worked in the Tobey attic. I'm creeping, not Mersey Tobey attic.
Okay, is that right?
But I know they have done similar work in the Midway.
Okay.
Eight lakes in the Midway system.
Yeah.
And I could get that information to you. I think up there, too, you've got the really low pH. The Tuscat River's funny. It's vinegar tea. It's so dark, and it's so acid. And I think that saves it, to some extent, from these blooms. It doesn't mean the nutrients aren't there, and they might not cause problems, but, yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah. But Cagushook's not the Tuscat River. So that's why I say it's more vulnerable.
Now, I was actually going to ask, can you just elaborate a little further why Cagushook, you feel is more vulnerable?
Okay. It's on the cold stream, it's not on the Tuscat.
Right. They mean below it, if I'm understanding.
Yeah. The Tuscat River comes up from way up and back. It's these peaty, dark water bugs. I mean, pH of four to five is really acid. Some people are amazed that any fish can live in there, but they do, they do fine. So it's a really low pH, and it's dark water. So the dark water limits light penetration, which means these little green guys
Producing.
Can't boom as much. They do okay near the surface. And I was surprised, actually, I won't go back to the slide, but the chlorophyll levels in Wentworth Lake and Par Lake in the upper Carlton, there was dark water, but they were pretty high a couple of times there. But there were no blooms. So I think there is some protection from that dark water.
Okay.
It limits production. The other thing is, we sampled the chlorophyll near the surface, so maybe a little deeper down. Yeah. So I think there's a bit of protection there. Cagushook doesn't have that. Clearer water, pH we're not sure about, but it's interesting how the higher pH lakes along the Carlton seem to have more problem. It might have a bit to do with more vulnerability. And the nutrients in Cagushook right now are low, but I did notice in October, the phosphate level was higher than before. I don't know why, whether it was a seasonal thing or not.
Okay.
But that was interesting. And last year, we checked in 2012, but our tests this, in 2013, were more sensitive. In 2012, ah, it's low, it's low, it's not measurable. Well, you lower the level detection, you can get more sensitive tests. So last year, we got better data.
Interesting. It's, I feel it's an important thing to be doing, for one, you know, fish stocks, it's not stocks, but it's essential. There's a lot of people, you know, doing a lot of trout fishing back on the, especially the Tuscat. But you take a lake like Cagushook, there's a lot of money invested there.
That's right. No problem with cottages, but I'm just saying, they shouldn't build too close to the lakes. They better not have their septic tanks there. And if they can leave a zone between where they are and the lakes, what's there is there. Can't do anything about it. No construction. Keep it as wild as possible for as wide as possible. Talk to Brad. He had a bit to do with it in Yarmouth. I mean, what they did there was good. And we will be glad to help propagandize in terms of helping to get the public interested, because most people, we have generated some stuff already, and we handed it out in the farmers markets last summer, and most people, oh, I didn't realize, hey, this is interesting, that sort of stuff. So, yeah. And the other thing, in terms of the water quality monitor, and we're not talking about money, especially this year, maybe in future, but this is just to start discussions.
Right.
And maybe with other municipalities, with the province, and all the rest of it.
Just curious, one more question, if you don't mind. You keep, you're referring to wheat. Pardon my ignorance, but who is wheat?
Who's wheat? Now, what was I saying? Which sentence? TREEPA, I'm exec director of TREEPA.
Okay.
We worked with Mersey Tobey attic and Nova Scotia Department of Environment to do these studies. Environment Nova Scotia, it was Carlton River Lakes, down as far as Lake Vaughan. Now, if you look at the data, you'll see some stuff from Lake Vaughan. I know Levaun's on the Tuscat, but we did it up, sort of, if any of you know people on Lake Vaughan, sort of off Don Dousit's place and Virgil Rogers' place, which is just down below where the Carlton comes in. So that's Carlton water, not Tuscat water.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? No?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Does the municipality of Yarmouth and the Clare, do they have, do they have a bylaw to protect against, to leave a buffer zone like
Right.
lawns and stuff, or leave, leave growth between the lawn and the
Yarmouth, Yarmouth does. Clare limits construction, but I don't think they limit land use aside from construction. And they have a wider zone, it's 60 or 65 feet. Yarmouth, it's 40 feet, 12 meters, but they limit, now, just a sec, I got my report here. What did they say? I'll read it to you. Let's see. Because I think it's, they did a really good job. I would have liked a wider zone, but basically, "In all zones where development is undertaken on a lot which borders a water course, an undisturbed buffer of 12 meters, 40 feet, is required to be maintained between the high-water mark on either side of a water course and any buffer or developed portion of the lot. Infilling or removal of material is not permitted within the buffer, except for minimal disturbance incidental to a permitted undertaking. In the water course buffer area, natural flora and fauna is to remain substantially undisturbed, except for penetration for wharves and boat launches. Moderate threatening tree cover in the buffer area to enable views is permitted, and good ecological practice is designed to minimize disturbance of natural shoreline areas are encouraged when undertaken all activities and developments within the buffer and all developments on properties but in water courses in the municipality and then see municipal planning strategy."
Forty feet.
Yeah. But the restrictions they put within that 40 feet are pretty strong.
Yeah.
That'll be difficult to enforce, but, well, you guys know, if you don't have the bylaws, you might, you got to have the bylaws first, and then a lot of it's public education after that, whether you can enforce or not. That's a challenge. I sympathize with that. But, yeah, it's in my report. Brad knows it well.
Yeah.
It's a good bylaw. As I say, I only comment on, it would be nice if it was wider, but, well, you got to start somewhere. And that is as strong a control as I know of on developments near, something like that. So it's a start. And they passed it unanimously, which surprised me. They had a lot of pushback when they tried a couple of years later. I don't know why, but people changed their mind, or seemed to. I went to two public information sessions in June, and they were preaching to the converted. All of us there supported that. And then they had the municipal council meeting, and it came up, and just, you know the way they go sometimes, all in favor, aye, and off it went. It was great.
Yeah.
Go figure.
Counsel, Counsel Muse.
That's a municipal bylaw that you're talking about there. But when you're talking about the distance that you can have, like a septic tank or whatever, isn't that regulated by the province anyway? Isn't there a provincial regulation or environmental regulation that says that you cannot put a septic tank so many feet from a water course?
Hundred feet.
Pardon me?
Hundred feet.
That's what I thought.
I know.
That's
Even better. So how come people are putting these septic tanks? Or why would municipality need a bylaw that says that you can't go within 40 feet if there's already a law there that says that you can't go within 100?
I think for the Yarmouth one, it was sort of, they weren't talking about construction. They were talking about any development of the land there, keeping it wild.
Oh, okay.
Now, Clare, I mean, okay, if they got that restriction on septic tanks, that's great. You know better than I do. Great. But if you want to put a shed or build a building or something like that, you could put the septic tank this side and put your house close to the water, so that's the restriction.
So the restriction is not the septic tank. It's any construction, any construction closer.
That's in clear.
Okay.
And in Yarmouth, it's any development whatsoever within that 40 feet, except for the bare minimum.
Okay. No, I had understood that it was just, you were talking about septic tanks, but you're talking about construction.
Right.
Buffer, okay.
Right. And of course, you know, the rules might be there, but still, some people are going to play games and hope somebody doesn't find them and all the rest of it. Then there's the old septic tanks, and what do you do about those?
Well, they're there.
They're there, and what do you do? And it costs a lot of money to get it fixed up, and, oh, God. Yeah. It's, we did a garbage cleanup down in Kelly's Cove last spring, and coming out of some of those ditches, that nice black water, I know what was running in there. And I mean, well, they don't have much money. What are you going to do? I don't know. They shouldn't be that way, but, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Having heard that? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you muchly. Hope it helped. And as I say, if you want to talk more about it, we're glad to talk more about it, and we will be saying similar things to the other two municipalities in the Tuscat catchment, and I will be bothering Environment Nova Scotia about it for sure. They're interested.
All right. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to number four, which is business arising from the minutes. Attachment with two pages, municipal boundary review. I think probably the CAO Muse can talk about this.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Just very quick updates on the boundary review process, municipal admin building and grants to organizations policy. Municipal boundary review, we have, we're focusing on process now. Council approved two options to bring to the community. So staff's role is to create a process for your approval. We have a meeting, actually, we've created a subcommittee of staff, and we have a meeting tomorrow, which will be the starting point. Some of the preliminary conversations we've had around public consultation is that there's probably, we require probably two dates, or two, I guess, efforts to go to the public. The first is to present what we have done so far, and to present the options of seven and nine, assuming that, of course, we'll get feedback from that, and there's a variety of ways that we will be receiving that feedback, so we're still working that through. Some of the things that we've spoken about include creation of videos, which will make it easier for people in terms of, like, if people have, like, literacy issues, that they can go to our website and actually click a video that'll be linked to Facebook, et cetera. And also, of course, accessible in other ways, depending on the need, and which will highlight, you know, how council got from where they were to here, the process that's involved, and education around the process that the UARB puts us through, and why we're doing it now, like, why now? So a lot of citizens don't know why we're doing this now. The second piece is, would be the case for seven and the case for nine. So we would, we would, a preliminary thought would be that we'd have two groups that would actually create, you know, the pros, all of the pros of seven, and then all of the pros of nine separately, so that people can read it through, and either read it or see it, and start to, you know, assemble their own thoughts around what they might prefer moving forward. So also, we're thinking about, obviously, surveys and actually going out to the community. Traditional modes of going out to the community would be to have an open meeting in a community and have, and have the invitation go out, well-advertised. That doesn't always work for people. We have very busy lifestyles these days, and that might be okay for somebody that's not employed, but somebody who's employed who has children, not necessarily the best. So we have toyed with the idea to actually go into already existing meetings, like, so if the seniors are having a Tuesday meeting, that we could go and actually just, just simply present information, so that, you know, that's our opportunity to educate. Say, look, we're going to, we're going to leave you maps, we're going to leave you brochures, leave us your thoughts, right? So we have the ability to do that as well, if we feel that that's proper engagement. A smaller group of staff, we've been very diligent with, or I guess, the process is extremely important to us as staff. We want the process to be, we don't want the process to be the problem. We want the debate to be about the options and what the residents would like to see moving forward. So we're going to, I think the plan is to do a lot more engagement than we would have done eight years ago. And because we're actually presenting two options, eight years ago, I was told that that was not required through the UARB, but now the province is saying that two options are required to be presented. So that was a fairly new event for us as staff. So we will abide by that and move forward. So that's where we are, and we would welcome any sort of input from council around how they would like to see the public engaged. We don't have on file, there was some discussion around this in council, last, at the last meeting, there was some discussion around whether or not council had recommended nine or not. The motion isn't a recommendation for nine. The motion was to direct count staff to prepare a revised nine for council's consideration. So that was done as well, because of the instructions from the province. We did a seven option, and so that was approved. Those two options were approved by motion at the last meeting. So as far as we're concerned, council has not recommended one choice over another. As far as we're concerned, council's presenting both options to get council, public input, and then at that point, would probably either make a recommendation to choose one of the two, or modify the seven or nine option to suit the input that you've received from the public. So from my perspective, it's going to require, it's going to require public consultation, and then an ability for us to assess that input, consider whether or not that changes what we've presented initially, and then either go, and then eventually make a recommendation at the council level. So that's what we're thinking right now, is, and so, again, we welcome any input on that process, and if anybody is interested in being part of the process in terms of setting it up, you know, we see it as a staff-driven event for you to approve, but you're certainly welcome to participate in that discussion at any time. So that's the update on the boundary review process. Municipal admin building, the only update I have is, we've created a subcommittee of staff to move this thing forward. So we're going to, you know, some of the input that we received from council last, at our last meeting, was that the combination of fire was, fire department and admin building was certainly not on the table anymore, so like, we have to now revisit the retrofit versus new, and the timing and all that. So I think where we left it last meeting, we had committed to get some contractors into, to have a, just a big picture, just a conversation around what they think is reasonable, them having a lot of experience with old buildings and with new construction. And secondly, there was also a planned road trip, because there are multiple admin buildings that have been built in the past five to seven years, one of which of particular interest in St., the municipality of St. Mary's, who use the Green Globe certification to get green gas tax funding to secure funding for a new building. So we have not moved that in any significant direction as of yet. Subcommittee has been struck, and we'll identify the next steps for council's consideration moving forward. And the grants to organizations policy, we discussed modifications. Those are attached to the main agenda for your review. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for the CAO Muse? No, all right. We'll move on to, I guess, 4A, which is grants to organizations policy.
I want to just question about it. It's just, it's just to serve as the first notice.
Hmm?
It's just to serve, to put there that it's served as the first notice.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yep. The modifications to the policy are in yellow. So at our last meeting, we discussed this. The modifications are, I think, fairly clear. And what we require from council is a discussion around this, and we And what we require from council is a discussion around this, and we don't require a motion today, but we would appreciate your input, and it would serve as notice for the next meeting for approval, assuming there were no changes. Obviously, we would modify whatever your suggestions are to this policy.
Counselor Sorette?
Maybe I pressed my button too early, I guess. I was going to make a motion, but this is more for discussion than, we'll wait for next meeting. Sorry about that.
Okay, if this is for discussion, is there anybody that wants to discuss it?
I think this is what we, pretty well, told staff that we were looking for last time, last meeting. No comments?
Okay, Counselor Sorette again.
Would there be a problem to make, Mr. CAO, to make a motion tonight if everybody who's read it, and that was at the last meeting, would you prefer for it to go, what do you think? I'm prepared to make a motion, but if you would rather leave it there till next meeting, then I, you know, I'll hold on.
Because we didn't, sorry, I'd love to pass this today, but because we haven't given you a week, even if it's a small modification, we have to give you a week's notice. So a week's notice is still required, this to be considered notice, and then at our next meeting, we can quickly approve it. Yep. If you notice, six point seven basically says that the warden and CAO will recommend to council whether the conditions of six point six apply. So before it comes to you as a council, the warden and CAO will sit down and say, okay, did they meet the qualifications? And if we think it's yes, then we'll bring it. If we think it's no, it won't be brought. It doesn't mean that if we bring it, you can't vote it down, of course you can, but that's the process, just a test that we'd like to put in place, and hopefully, this fixes any sort of...
All right.
Thank you.
Nothing else on that? We'll move to number five, financial report. Only sixteen pages. That's you too, CAO Muse?
Okay, well, I am going to focus on certain line items, but however, every quarter, we print the detail for your review. Typically, every month, you only get the first summarized, the first three pages. We are, I'll refer you all to page three, which shows an anticipated surplus. Again, this is an anticipation at a period of time. I do anticipate a surplus for the end of the year, largely due to the fact that certain commitments that we made during the year will be deferred. Two in particular of note, one would be the Tuscat Court improvements. We spoke about this before, the prices were much different than what we were given in the early part of the year. So not only are we revisiting that project, we're also asking the province of Nova Scotia to fund a third of that improvement. So sometimes, a delay works in your advantage. We're cautiously optimistic that they'll be supportive, but of course, there's a process, and there's only so much money, so we'll see how much money the province is willing to contribute. The program that we're going through is, funds up to, funds one-third of projects up to one hundred and fifty thousand. So one-third provincial funding on these would be very, very considerable. The second item that I believe will be deferred is an amount of economic development for the community of Argyle. We weren't sure what that was going to look like, so we put a number that we felt was, you know, substantial, high enough in order to do certain things. That number was sixty-five thousand dollars. We spent virtually zero of that money this year, and before the end of the year, I'll be recommending to council that we would transfer that into a reserve and bring it in to next year, so that we can actually invest that money in the community next year. So those two pieces, they're two larger pieces that make up that surplus, that are actually commitments that we're still committed to do, just simply deferred into the next year. So in terms of revenues, overall, we are ahead of what we anticipated so far for the end of December, to the tune of seventy-two thousand dollars. That's the variance that is showing. So what we anticipated, five point four five nine million at the end of December, we're actually at five point five three two. There are three reasons why. One is the change of use tax that I always budget conservatively, and Counselor Sorette always reminds me of that. I'm anticipating a year where I'm actually going to be right, but I'm glad I'm wrong every year. So it's basically a cautious budgeting process. The second piece is the return on investments and interest on taxes is higher than we anticipated. Some of that is timing, because as the year goes by, your payments get applied and your expenditures get incurred, and so the cash on hand reduces, and so your revenues therefore also reduce. So while I do expect that at the end of the year, we'll see higher than anticipated revenues there, it may not be to the extent that you're seeing. And the third reason why, major reason, is that we, in looking at our colleagues' revenues around provincial government grants, we noticed that there was considerably more grants, fire protection grants in other communities. So we investigated that, and what we found was that we were, we had an opportunity to claim additional revenues through the schools that roam provincially, that they would, they have therefore paid us about eight thousand dollars, I believe it's eight thousand dollars more than we anticipated last year, and that will be ongoing, and that's to pay for fire protection for their, for provincial assets. So we had initially only included land in that calculation, but we noted subsequently that certain schools would also qualify for that funding. So that wasn't anticipated, so that's a bonus for this year. In terms of expenditures, total expenditures at this period of time are anticipated to be five point four five nine million, they are actually five point two two three million. So a total variance, budget to actual, of two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. Two of the bigger numbers I've already noted to you, and again, I'll be recommending they be deferred into the new year. Other notable variances would include, excuse me, if we were to look on page seven, I don't know if you can, it starts, it's the first page relating to expenditures, and general and administrative costs were anticipated to be two hundred and twenty-six thousand this year. At this time, they're actually two hundred and two. So I think that's just a, you know, some conservative budgeting and probably more frugality around the timing and what we actually spend our money on. So there's a positive variance of twenty-four thousand dollars. I looked at last year's costs for this particular section, and it was two hundred and nineteen thousand, so we're actually ahead of last year as well. IT, IT generally does very well with their budget, currently budgeting eighty thousand, actual sixty-nine thousand, variance positive of eleven thousand, that's due to a number of factors, mostly due to capital equipment purchases were lower than anticipated. Now, that actually may, that gap may close towards the end of the year, because typically, we don't purchase our capital assets immediately, we purchase them only as needed through the year. And some of the budget under capital equipment anticipates contingencies, or like, computers dying, so if the computers don't die, we obviously don't buy a new computer. So employee benefits are as expected, I'll continue down, we are now on page ten? Sorry. Nine. Starting with the line, other government general services. We are, when looking at the expenses in this section, we are looking at mostly grants to organizations, we're also looking at district community grants and conventions, UNSM conferences, training. It's ten thousand dollars below expectations, and actually, closer to thirty thousand below last year. And that's due almost entirely to two things. One is the election, we didn't have an election this year. We seem to like to have those, sometimes more than once. Not funny. Anyway, we'll continue. You've got to throw in a joke once in a while, because this is kind of dry. So, sure it is. Anyway, so, and the other reason is the fact that really, we didn't go to the FCM and the UNSM was way down this year. Continue to the next page. Police protection and otherwise, I mean, those are all numbers we don't have a lot of control over. The keeping on going on page ten. Emergency measures, we have savings of eleven thousand, I expect there to be a savings there for the year. We just haven't invested in the capital equipment that we had initially thought we would. Wrapping this up, there's areas where we'll be over budget. One will be the airport, which you're all well aware, we made a decision around that last meeting. That's not fully reflected in these books, but they will be by the end of the year. Also, we seem to be on par with the contributions to consultants for ferry service. If you recall, we had made a commitment of thirty thousand, well, actually, total of fifty, but it was over two years. This year's amount was anticipated to be thirty thousand, we're currently within that range. This, of course, is not the ferry terminal, that's actually the consulting work around the ferry. In terms of the terminal, quite frankly, I don't expect any invoices of a significant nature in this fiscal. We still don't know whether our portion of the twenty percent will, whether there'll be a fiscal amount there, but it looks like we're still on schedule. We did build in contingencies on that project, so it's still, you know, fairly likely that that will not require an initial contribution from Argyle at this time. But that's a moving target. The YASTA actually made an emergency request for funding, so that also will show as a negative, because that will be over budget. As far as the remaining costs, just a heads-up on garbage collection and disposal, our disposal fees are a little over budget compared to what we expected it to be at this time of year. That might even out, because some of that is December garbage, and we have a tendency to have a lot of garbage in December for obvious reasons, but that might even out before the end of the year. Typically, we would budget very conservatively in this area, but because our budget was tight last year, we tried to keep this budget fairly tight, and it shows right now. It shows that we'll probably be very close to budget on garbage collection and disposal. What's interesting as well is that landfill fees, revenues, or sorry, expenses in that area and around organics are typically, they're typically a sign of the economy. So when we see those numbers rise, it generally means there's more people, it generally means that there's more disposable income, because there's more waste. So we seem to have a correlation there, so the fact that that's up might actually be an encouraging sign for the economy, although I'm not an economist. But it's interesting how it correlates. So, and the rest, I think I'll leave for your imagination, with one exception, housing and RDA section, which highlights our investments in economic development. The other investment in economic development that I expect there to be a surplus is the REN. The REN will cost us probably zero this year, very close to zero on a net basis. Argyle has agreed to, well, the CAO has agreed to do the administration for the REN for the startup funding. So because of that, we will get an admin revenue that will offset pretty much all of our costs. So we'll run the program, we'll make sure that it goes to the end of March, but then once the REN is created, that will be, that will be somebody else to do that. There's some provisions around SWADA and closure costs of the commission that I expect there to be surpluses there as well. And that's a mouthful. Recreation is also ahead of budget, but that's because of the tennis courts, and that's about it. Realizing that that's a lot of detail to kind of absorb, but also particularly interested in give you the details on the corridors, so that you're aware of the trends and what's happening. And like I said, I am expecting a surplus for the municipality this year, and I'll be probably making recommendations to council around transferring funds to reserves before the end of the month of March.
Okay, any questions? I see Counselor Sorette?
I got a few questions, not a whole lot, but the windmill revenue, that I know it's not this year, will that be a separate line item? And what's anticipated in that? And of course, I'll be on revenue, will that be, yes, number one, is that separately, would that be a separate line? And number two, what was the expected revenue again, or do you know?
Yes, okay. So the first part of your question is answered on page one of your financial report. It is the fourth revenue line, and it's called commercial special tax agreement legislation. It is currently showing, the budget for the full year is a hundred and seventy-three thousand, that is one hundred percent Pabnik Point Wind Turbine. There is a thirty-one thousand dollar grant that we get from Energy Nova Scotia in that particular instance, because we were the first wind farm, there was transitional grants that were given to that particular wind farm. That doesn't exist for new ones. What we're anticipating, so that's where that revenue will show. So for a turbine, so we now know that there's a turbine being erected in Little River, it's actually erected, and what happens is, there's a commission date, six months after that commission date, the revenue becomes, that's when the revenue begins. And it's by legislation, and it's fifty-five hundred dollars per megawatt. So those are two megawatts, or slightly less than two megawatts. So you can anticipate, plus inflation, so it's eleven thousand dollars plus about eight years of inflation. So it's about closing in on fourteen thousand dollars a year per turbine, in the comp instance that we're seeing.
Thank you. Question number two. Question number two, the municipal auditor, thirty-three hundred and seventy-five dollars, nothing's been spent on that, I see, so obviously, we don't have a municipal auditor yet, or that I know of, anyhow?
No, we don't. The province and the UNSM have been negotiating this, probably going on two years. This was, if you recall, some of you would, well, it's through the MOU that was canceled by the NDP government, but...
Really?
The MOU had included, this was something that they wanted the municipalities to invest in, and as a consequence, other things came off the table, but that never came off the table, the municipal auditor general. And so what they're doing, what the problem, they are still committed, to the best of my knowledge, to put in place a municipal auditor general. They will bill every municipality for that, we have not been billed yet for that, because they haven't established the department yet. It's my understanding that we will be billed whether we get an audit or not. So the fact that we get an audit is irrelevant, we would pay every year. That's my understanding, and in the year that we get an audit, we may have to pay more. Yeah, so that's my understanding of what's going on, but there's still a lot of discussion forthcoming, I think, on that, yep.
And if you don't mind, number three, and that'll be it. Again, penalties and interest, that seems to be, I guess, a little higher, and I think we've mentioned this, or I have, and you have to, that when we see this, it could be a lot of the interest, not actually penalties? Is it more interest, maybe?
There really isn't penalties, it's, for whatever reason, they call it interest and penalties, and that's the wording that's given to us by the framework, the accounting framework municipally. But it is interest, and it's sixteen percent on late taxes. And we say this all the time, when that number rises, we're not particularly fond, that's not the way we want to generate revenue, because that means that people are falling behind in payments in comparison to prior years. We're about even right now in collections compared to last year, but I expect it to pick up in the new, you know, in the coming months, I expect it to pick up typically, people, I mean, the tax sale was advertised today, it will be first advertisement, and that typically will generate some additional interest in paying. typically will generate some additional interest in paying off balances. So that will also play a role.
That's it, thank you.
Right, Counselor Soret, anybody else? No more questions for CMOs? No more comments, CMOs? So that's just the financial report. Do we make a motion to accept it, or?
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Okay, carry. We'll move on to number six, other business and for decision. This is six A, municipal heritage property there, Gableton Church and Green Lawn Cemetery. We have an attachment of one page. So this is a notice of registration of the heritage property. I think CMOs, you know a little bit more about this than I do.
So this is a request, a notice of registration, I believe requires your approval. Just my computer just died on me, so I apologize for, it's kind of being a little off, but. So basically, the registration of the property is that it basically protects the property from any sort of alteration, demolition, substantial alteration or demolition as indicated by the notice. This requires municipal approval for it to be granted. The Heritage Advisory Committee has recommended this to you, the council, and I would also recommend that you accept their recommendation around this.
Yeah, I guess I do have here municipal heritage property, Gableton Church and Green Lawn Cemetery. The Municipal Heritage Advisory Committee of the Argyle Municipal Historical and Geological Society requests that council approve to proceed with the registration of the Gableton Primitive Baptist Church and Green Lawn Cemetery as a municipal heritage property. They advise that the church and the cemetery meet all of the necessary criteria. Okay.
Natural move.
Okay, moved by Warden Donclemont, seconded by Counselor Booker or Counselor LeBlanc, I don't know who beat who to the punch.
Your choice.
Okay, we'll give it to ladies first, right?
It's a polite thing to do.
So seconded by Counselor Booker, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Okay, carry. All right, we'll move down to seven, which is correspondence and for information, in which we don't have anything, do we? Nope. Number eight is financial request, which we do not have. Nine is notice of motion. Do we have a financial request?
No, we will have to deal with the sea kayak at the next meeting with the approval of the policy.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, okay. Number nine is notice of motion. Anybody have a notice of motion? I mean, her or none, we'll move on to number 10, which is question period. Anybody have any questions? No? Go ahead.
I have one thing to add, another question. This green water, I mentioned to Gary, some of these blue-green algal blooms, there are public health implications associated with them too, so it's not just beauty and all that sort of stuff, there's, some of them carry nasty toxins, so it's good to be aware.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, number 11 is in camera, so.
Move with recess and go in camera.
Move with recess, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary?
Yes, I can do it.
I guess nobody seconded, but, do we have a second there?